Alright, welcome to the thirty-sixth meeting of the Honolulu Liquor Commission. We're going straight into public hearings, calling agenda item number one, transfer application number two zero dash two one four eight seven, from Sushi King LLC, Mr. Luke.
Yes. Olivia Kondowakaka is present with counsel Wayne Luke. She is a member. Uh, we have no directions to the investigator's report.
Thank you, Mr. Luke. Ms. Hary.
Uh, thank you, madam chair and commissioners. This application has received zero written protests, zero letters in support. Applicant has met statutory requirements for the submission of this application.
Commissioners, any comments or concerns regarding this, regarding agenda item one?
Hearing none. Uh, motion to approve transfer application number two zero dash two one four eight seven.
Second.
It's been moved in second to approve transfer application number two zero dash two one four eight seven. All those in favor?
Lee.
Aye.
Min.
Aye.
Miyashiro.
Aye.
Ganabon.
I vote aye, motion carried. Application is approved, Mr. Luke. Thank you. Okay, going on to agenda item number two, transfer application number two one dash two two seven one five, from Full Vietnam Incorporated, Mr. Luke.
Yes. Uh, the President Kim Leen Tran is present with counsel Wayne Luke. We have no changes to investigator's report. They have been operating under a temporary license without any problems.
Thank you, Mr. Luke. Ms. Hary.
Thank you, madam chair and commissioners. This application has received zero written protests, zero letters in support. Applicant has met statutory requirements for the submission of this application.
Okay, commissioners, any questions, comments regarding agenda item two?
Hearing none, motion to approve transfer application number two one dash two two seven one five.
Second.
It's been moved in second to approve transfer application number two one dash two two seven one five. All those in favor?
Lee.
Aye.
Min.
Aye.
Miyashiro. Ganabon.
I also vote aye, motion carried. Transfer app is approved, Mr. Luke. Calling agenda item number three, application number two one dash two two five five three, from Kapahale LLC. Mr. Lee.
Yes, good afternoon, Commissioner Seth Buckley and Kyaka Lee appearing on behalf of Kapahale LLC.
I'm sorry, what was your, was it, what was your name, sir?
Seth Buckley.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Hary.
Thank you, madam chair and commissioners. This application has received zero written protests, zero letters in support. Applicant has met statutory requirements for the submission of this application.
Commissioners, any questions or comments?
Just a comment, um, gentlemen, just today, coincidentally, I heard the food is good, so good luck.
Motion to approve application number two one dash two two five five three.
Second.
It's been moved in second to approve application number two one dash two two five five three. All those in favor?
Lee.
Aye.
Min.
Aye.
Miyashiro.
Aye.
Ganabon.
I vote aye, motion carried. Application is approved, good luck, gentlemen.
You, Commissioner.
Okay, going into preliminary hearings, calling transfer application, agenda item four, transfer application number two one dash two two five three five, from Non-Loots Ramen Bar, Mr. Luke.
Yes, to my right is Blain Nishizawa. He's the president, he's present with counsel Wayne Luke. There are no changes to investigator's report. He is on a temporary license.
Thank you, Mr. Luke. Commissioners, any questions or comments for the applicant?
Hearing none, motion to approve transfer application number two one dash two two five three five.
Second.
It's been moved in second to approve transfer application number two one dash two two five three five. All those in favor?
Lee.
Aye.
Min.
Aye.
Miyashiro.
Aye.
Ganabon.
I also vote aye, motion carried. Thank you, Mr. Luke.
Thank you.
Okay, calling agenda item number five, application number one nine dash one six four six one, from Pesca Waikiki Beach Incorporated, Mr. Gota.
Good afternoon, members of the commission, Neil Gota appearing on behalf of Pesca Waikiki Beach Incorporated. Appearing with me is Rhea Ashley De La Cruz, the manager. She's a, her name appears as Brian Gold on the screen, but it's Rhea.
Alright. Um, and we have- It's somebody else's law again. I don't know how it got that way, but.
And we have no changes to the investigative report.
Okay. Um, just for the record, Mr. Gota, can you go ahead and spell the, um, the, the client's name as well?
Sure. Her name is Rhea, R-H-E-A, Ashley, A-S-H-L-E-Y, De La Cruz, D-E-L-A-C-R-U-Z.
Thank you, ma- uh, Mr. Gota. Okay, commissioners, any questions or comments for the applicant?
Hearing none, motion to approve application number one nine dash one six four six one.
Second.
It's been moved in second to approve application number one nine dash one six four six one. All those in favor?
Lee.
Aye.
Min.
Aye.
Miyashiro.
Aye.
Ganabon.
I vote aye, motion carried. Thank you, Mr. Gota.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Calling agenda item number six, application number two one dash two two one nine eight, from Masal Properties Incorporated, DBA Beer Lab Hawaii, Mr. Luke. Mr. Luke, you're muted.
Alright. Nickraiz Wong is present with counsel Wayne Luke. We have no changes to the investigator's report, and other than the submission that I also made.
Mr. Luke, the most recent submission you made was the two-page response, correct?
Yes.
Okay. Commissioners, comments, concerns?
Mr. Luke, I have a question on issue number one raised by the investigator. There, um, appears to be an interpretation of whether the restaurant is gonna be operated in a bona fide manner. Are you aware of any, um, authority or definition of bona fide manner in the context of this?
Well, what we've used in the past and is an example, like, in our situation, we have a restaurant, you're serving two meals, two meals a day, with a menu from a kitchen. As compared to someone who tries to use a hot dog machine, you know, from their own, um, container. You know, that's what they mean by bona fide. And I, I would like to say, I think the investigator is completely wrong as to what he considers to be bona fide. Being bona fide is we have all the requirements of the restaurant license. And, and, and not like I explained as a hot dog, you know, sales, or even bringing sales from outside, you know, into the premise. You know, that's what I think bona fide is referred to. And our restaurant, you come in, you order, you, you put a menu, it's cooked in the kitchen, and it comes out. Anything after that, you know, I, I think that's all, that's the bare requirements that we need.
Okay, I, I appreciate your, um, comments on that. And there was a reference to Tide House, and I believe this was raised in connection with another application.
He is not-
Give us a brief, your position on the Tide House issue?
Yeah, this, this Tide House issue, uh, it was, was brought up. Ours was different because it was two brew pubs. Um, you, um, a month ago, you approved the application for Maluma beer, whereas one was a restaurant and one was a brew pub. And, yeah, both basically, uh, was approved because both are considered to be retailers. Yeah. And this is the same situation.
Okay, I, I recall that conversation. I just wanted to add the record for this particular application. Thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, Mr. Luke, I do have a, um, one quick question. It, it wasn't a, a point brought up by the investigator, but, um, I just have a question upon, on the lease. I see there's a specialty lease agreement, um, for the space. Um, just wanted to know if that specialty lease agreement acknowledged the, um, arrangement that, um, you're proposing?
Uh, yes, it did.
No, it was Nick, uh, Mr. Wong.
Sorry, yes, it did.
Okay.
Other questions, comments?
Chair, I do have a question for licensing.
Go ahead, Commissioner Miyashiro.
I have a question for licensing.
Oh, licensing, I'm sorry, Mr. Sato.
Supervising investigator Daniel Sato.
Mr. Sato, thank you. Um, can you, um, elaborate on some of the question asked, Mr. Luke? Is there any authority or definition of bona fide in the context of the issue raised? And how does it apply in this case?
I actually have investigator Takehara downstairs, who wrote the report. He could actually address that directly. Can get him up.
Mr. Takehara, can you hear us?
Yes, I can hear you.
Okay, did you hear Commissioner Miyashiro's, um, question?
I think it had to do with, uh, uh, what, what's considered bona fide or how, how that's, um, used or, I'm sorry, could you re-
Sure, I'll, I'll restate the question. So, I'm looking for any authority or definition of bona fide in the context of restaurant operations? And I'll, I'll add that, the interpretation seems subjective to me. And I'm wondering if there's some objective, um, application of the term bona fide?
Well, as far as bona fide, um, there's no definition of it in, um, chapter two eighty-one. Um, so I had to go to outside sources, uh, to try to figure out what that means. Um, I guess the best, uh, source that I could find was, um, like, uh, the Black Small Dictionary, uh, which defines bona fide as, uh, made in good faith, uh, without fraud or deceit. Also, uh, sincere, uh, genuine. And, and if you define, further define all those terms. For example, good faith, uh, means a state of mind consisting in honesty and belief or purpose, faithfulness to the, faithfulness to one's duty or obligation, observance of reasonable commercial standards of fair dealing in a given trader business, absence of intent to defraud or to seek unconscionable advantage. And then, it says without fraud or deceit. Uh, fraud would be, uh, knowing misrepresentation or knowing concealment of a material fact to induce another to act to his or her detriment. A reckless misre- misrepresentation made without justified belief in its truth to induce another person to act. Deceit, uh, the act of intentionally leading someone to believe something that is not true, an act designed to deceive or trick. A false statement of fact made by a person knowingly or recklessly, uh, that is not caring whether it is true or false with the intent that someone else will act on it. And genuine, um, authen- genuine of a thing, authentic or real, having the quality of what a given thing purports to be or to have. And, yeah, bad faith or, it's- Yeah, I guess those are the terms that, um, are, uh, used in bona fide. And so-
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
In, in the application of those terms as you've, um, read it, being defined by Black Small Dictionary.
Yes.
How does it apply in your findings in this instance?
Well, it's not the licensee who's actually making and selling the liquor. It's actually the food trucks, uh, that are making and selling the liquor. Um, by reading the agreement, my understanding is that, um, everything related to the food, uh, service, whether it's, uh, making the food, uh, selling the food, um, paying for all the expenses, um, all the liabilities, um, et cetera. Um, they're all borne by the, the food trucks. And the applicant, the license or the to-be licensee, is actually, um, just collecting a fee effectively. The way the contract is written up, it's, it's, it was really difficult to understand. And so I had to really, um, I guess spend a lot of time trying to understand it. Some points I thought, okay, maybe this is a typo, but, um, after having read it through thoroughly and assess, uh, making my analysis, um, yeah, I came to the conclusion that the, uh, the applicant is actually just receiving a fee. So they're, they're basically, um, engaging outside companies to provide, um, to make the food, to sell the food. And then the reporting is just gonna be under the licensee's, uh, name. Um, I'm not really sure how that works or, um, whether it's okay or not. That part, I'm not too sure. But, um, as far as the, um, what the licensee is doing and what the food trucks are doing, I think it, it, that's, that's what makes the separation. And the fact that the licensee is, or the, sorry, the applicant is just receiving a fee, they're, they're not actually responsible for making, selling, profiting from the food. Um, that's sort of what, um, I guess that's sort of what I concluded based on.
Okay, I, I, I appreciate your analysis, but I don't hear any findings of fraud or deceit, or the opposite of good faith, which is bad faith. Um, I don't have any further questions. I know you're gonna appreciate your analysis.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments, commissioners?
No, motion to convene into executive session.
Second.
It's been moved in second to convene into executive session. All those in favor?
Lee.
Aye.
Min.
Aye.
Miyashiro.
Aye.
Ganabon.
I vote aye. We are now in executive session. Okay, we are back on the record. I will call agenda item number six, application number two one dash one nine eight, from Masal Properties Incorporated, DBA Beer Lab Hawaii. Thank you, gentlemen, for allowing us to convene into executive session. We're now back on the record. Uh, commissioners, comments, questions for the applicant?
Uh, I'll start, chair.
Oh, okay.
Uh, yes, uh, Mr. Luke and Mr. Wong, um, you, you folks intend to have food trucks there during all of your hours of operation, correct?
So, just to clarify, they're not food trucks, you know, they're, they're chefs, right? So, we allow them to utilize the kitchen also. So this is, uh, you know, Department of Health Sanitation side. We allow them to use the kitchen as a support kitchen for their food truck also. So, they are chefs who happen to be, you know, were using their kitchen as their support kitchen while also cooking, um, you know, in, in the kitchen also.
But the food delivery, how does the food delivery work?
Not delivered, it's cooked in the location, in the kitchen.
Okay, how does the food get from the kitchen to the customers?
We take it from the kitchen, and they put it on the table, and we give it to the customer.
Okay, so, you're not gonna, so these food trucks that I refer to, these are just the chefs from the food trucks? So they're not gonna be in the food trucks at all?
Oh, there's no way, place to put a food truck in the location. They're just chefs, so that's kind of what people are chefs.
Okay, okay. Alright, thank you for clarifying. And also, um, so, but these chefs are not your employees?
Uh, they are not our employees.
But they're gonna be on the licensed premises?
Yes.
So, are you gonna be responsible for their conduct?
Yes, we are.
And any-
Under the, under the liquor laws, they are considered employees. So the liquor commission has jurisdiction over them.
Okay, so you understand then, Mr. Wong, you're responsible for their conduct?
Yes, we do.
And they're gonna be cooking, there'll be food available during all business hours?
Yes.
Alright, uh, I have nothing else, commissioners.
But you're unmuted.
You're unmuted, Lee.
Sorry, thank you. I have one question too. Vice chairman asked, how is the food gonna get from the kitchen to the customer, but how is the food gonna get to the kitchen? Is it gonna be stored there, and then the chef shows up and prepares it per order?
Yes, like a normal kitchen. There's a whole walk-in, the food is raw, it's in the chiller. They take it out, they prepare it, they cook it, and we serve it to the customer.
Okay, and there's a lot of, and maybe that's why, at least in my head, I'm envisioning food trucks sitting outside the parking lot. But are there gonna be food trucks even on premises?
There are no food trucks on premise.
Okay, thank you for clarifying that. And what is your, um, plan or contingency plan if one of the chefs cannot attend or make a shift while you're open for operations?
So, they have, you know, we, uh, I guess there's not just one chef cooking, right? There's, they have a team.
Okay.
So if one guy is sick, then the team fills in, just like a normal restaurant. There's not just one guy back there cooking all the food, right? It's, if they have a team, so if one guy calls in sick, then they have their team that fills in for that sick individual.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Lee.
Okay, yes, I, uh, we just have one-on-one clarification, um, um, on, for the on-premise outside, I, I, we did read your report, and, um, um, it seemed that the sales may be, you know, lumped together from the food, um, truck sales to, to, um, get you to that thirty percent. Um, uh, if you could, you know, for, for public hearing, let us know how, um, on-premise sales, um, will be, um, recorded as part of your POS, um, we're, uh, you can explain it now if you want, or, um?
Yeah, I'm more than happy to explain it now. Um, we have one POS system run by our company. All the food sales and, you know, on-premise alcohol sales all go through the same POS system. There is no separate POS system that is run by the chefs. It's, it's all under us.
Okay, so, um, I just wanted to confirm is that when you do do a sale, um, a food sale in, in your premise, that's the, um, by item that will be, um, applied towards a thirty percent, not sales by other?
No.
I mean, by the food truck, you know, on the street, operating their own company.
Yeah, yeah, it, it's all on whatever's on premise is coming to us, and that's gonna be what's on the line item.
Okay.
Um, Mr. Wong, and Mr. Luke, thank you for being patient with us, and, you know, I think we're going towards, um, creative times. You know, we're headed towards creative times. We're seeing different type of business plans happening, and we have to question, um, the practices of it because we're not familiar. And this is a very unknown territory that we're headed down. And we wanna make right decisions based on your answers and what's being provided to us. So, um, you know, along that lines that you were saying that the POS was gonna be only one system, are you segregating the POS by vendors? By chefs?
No, no, it's just, it, if, 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 just to kind of clarify, we as Beer Lab have one POS. Everything that goes on in that location is run through our one POS, just like a normal operating res- restaurant. Isn't, that, that side of it is completely the same.
How, um, how do you plan on being compliant with your, your withholding with, with your sub-agreement with your vendors that you collect fifteen percent? How would you segregate those sales out?
So, I guess we, if, we're gonna get a little bit deeper into how a POS system is, is gonna set up. So we, you know, we use categories and modifiers within the POS system to pull out an item as a food item. We're from there, we're able to pull reports, you know, and be able to separate out and view how the food is, is being sold, the amount is being sold at, you know, that time. And that's how we're gonna be able to pull the reports for those food vendors, for the, the chefs.
Only reason why I'm questioning is because on a audit provision, when, when they come in to audit your books to show that there is thirty percent of food sales, it has to be a simplistic way of explaining it to our auditors that they can distinguish and feel confident that you are meeting that earmark on thirty percent.
Yep, completely understand. And, and it's, yeah, it, it, the way the POS system is set up, it is very clear to show food sales, uh, on-premise liquor sales, um, very clearly. And, and, yeah, I guess we, we can also work on, I guess, kind of, yeah, working with you guys to put it, yeah, to clarify it and put in a form and a, I guess, a version that is good for you guys' auditor.
Um, my last question is, um, jeez, just escaped my, my mind. It's okay, I, um, pro- probably prior to public hearing, we, um, we would wanna see something, um, to that ex- how do I wanna say? Oh, one last question, I got my question, sorry. So, the dancing provision, there, they said that there will be no dancing allowed. Is that a, is that a per- you're prohibiting it on your own, or is it because the law is prohibiting it from your lease agreement?
Um, we don't, we don't want dancing. Um, we're, we're prohibiting it on our own.
Okay. Okay. Commissioners, any other questions?
Uh, before, um, excuse me, gentlemen, before public hearing, could you provide a menu of your proposed both food items and alcohol that you are proposing to sell?
Sure, absolutely.
Thank you.
Uh, motion to approve application number two one dash two two one nine eight.
Second.
It's been moved in second to approve application number two one dash two two one nine eight. All those in favor?
Lee.
Aye.
Min.
Aye.
Miyashiro.
Aye.
Ganabon.
I also vote aye, motion carried. Okay, application, um, approved. See you next time, gentlemen.
Thank you very much.
Okay, calling agenda item number seven, application number two one dash two two nine zero six from Simon Says LLC, DBA Papa Kurtz.
Uh, good afternoon. Good afternoon, members of the commission, Neil Gota appearing on behalf of Simon Says LLC, doing business as Papa Kurtz. Appearing with me is Tyler Amina, the manager. Uh, this is the former Agu Ramen location on Eisenberg.
Thank you, Mr. Gota. Commissioners, any questions, comments, concerns?
Uh, hearing none, motion to approve application number two one dash two two nine zero six.
Second.
It's been moved in second to approve application number two one dash two two nine zero six. All those in favor?
Lee.
Aye.
Min.
Aye.
Miyashiro.
Aye.
Ganabon.
I also vote aye, motion carried. Thank you, Mr. Gota.
Thank you very much.
Okay, going into the request, agenda item number eight, request number two one dash two two seven eight six from Atlant LLC, DBA in between, in between, I'm sorry, um, Mr. John Black, yes?
Yes. I am the licensee and my manager, Brian Tabasco is also here with us.
Ryan, okay, I see you.
He was.
You see him on, okay. Um, commissioners, any questions or comments?
Oh, Mr. Black, I, I, I'm familiar with your establishment, and you could use an increase in your license premises. It's, it's a, it's a hole in the wall, huh?
Absolutely, yes, we are five hundred and fifty square feet, I believe, with, with the bathrooms.
Okay, okay.
What we're trying to do is add a, a very small outside area to, um, basically to expand a little bit and also to help meet the requirements with COVID restrictions and the like, the like.
Right.
Yeah, uh, Mr. Black, I, I,
Motion. Go ahead.
Oh, sorry, I do have a, um, a question, uh, um, we're pretty used to approving temporary, um, exterior areas, you know, in view of the, the COVID nineteen, but now yours is a permanent um, extension. If you could explain kind of how, um, you're gonna operate this outside area, um, if you're gonna, and what's gonna go on there, um, since it's gonna be permanent and it's kind of gonna back out, you know, in, in Waikiki, um, we wanna make sure that, um, your sound is at a minimum and, and whatnot, um, where that is.
Okay, okay, the area that we're talking about, uh, is directly in front of the, of the bar, it's approximately eighty-five square feet, it's not too big an area at all, um. Our bar is situated on, basically on a walkway or an alleyway, uh, we're the building itself has an overhang, this lanai for the upstairs business, and that goes out, projects out about three or four feet, I don't remember the exact, uh, dimensions. But in any event, that, that's where the, the actual property line is, and, and the alleyway itself is a privately owned walkway, which is owned with an undivided interest of all of the buildings on, on the block, which is a private block. Um, what we intend to do is build a, about a five, I think it's four feet or five feet wall to enclose the area, which will also have a door, at night that door will be locked, um, which will serve a couple of purposes, including, uh, discouraging homeless folks from sleeping there in front of the bar, which happens almost nightly. Uh, but it will be an enclosed area, the bar itself has a window in place in the front, uh, we're gonna be changing the window frame so that it's, like, we can open that window and serve through there to customers in that enclosed area outside. And that will, uh, you know, that will also, there'll also be, of course, security cameras, which I have outside now, will, will be replaced with a new system. Uh, there'll be two security cameras twenty-four hours a day recording out there. So, that's basically what we have in mind.
What are your current hours of operation?
I'm sorry?
I'm sorry, what are your current hours of operation for your, for your?
Uh, well, currently we're closed, but, but we, normal hours would be twelve noon to, uh, two AM.
And are you, um, aware of any other outdoor, um, areas of, in your vicinity? Currently?
Well, I, I know of, uh, you know, several with lanais and like, and that sort of thing, but that's on the second floor for the, primarily. Um, I know in the-
And it's in the same block as you?
Uh, no, that's about a block away, it's on, on Lower Street. There's, um, Bacchus Waikiki, which I'm also one of the owners of, uh, we have an upstairs lanai that is uh, licensed and, uh, but we haven't been using it very much because of the COVID situation. Um, there's also, uh, Tapas, which is over on Seaside, and Kuhio, which has an outside lanai as well, again on the second floor. I know in Kaimaki, there were, a number of places have put out, built out wooden lanai areas in the streets, I assume they got permits to build into the, into the public streets, so they're, uh, they're doing that in, on, on Wailei Avenue, but.
Right, right, you're, 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 you're correct. Sorry, you're correct, those are, those are, as I recall, they were temporary approvals, um, due to the, the COVID um, requirement, so I mean, assuming we will, um, grant your approval with this application, then it's asked that, um, you be mindful of your neighbors and, and any complaints that you may receive, you know, in your area.
Yeah, absolutely, I mean, the nearest, the nearest residential, uh, neighbor is, is the Ritz Carlton, which is about a block and a half away from us, and then the various condos on Kuhio Avenue, which are a couple of blocks from us. We've never had complaints yet, and we don't intend to have, um, you know, electronic, uh, speakers or music or anything outside, so there should be no real increase in noise levels out there, except for perhaps, you know, an occasional, somebody might let out a yell or something, but, uh, uh, but other than that, we, we don't see any, any likelihood of a big increase.
Okay, thank you.
Motion to approve request number two-one dash two-two-seven-eight-six.
Second.
It moved in second to approve request number two-one dash two-two-seven-eight-six, all those in favor?
Li.
Aye.
Min.
Aye.
Miyashiro.
Aye.
Gana Ban.
I also vote aye, motion carried, thank you, Mr. Black.
Thank you, Commissioners, appreciate it.
Okay, calling agenda item number nine, request number two-one dash two-two-nine-one-two from Seventeen-Eight Productions LLC, DBA Skull and Crown Credit Trading Company.
Can you see me? Okay, good afternoon Commissioners, my name is Angelina Khan, um, A-N-G-E-L-I-N-A-K-H-A-N. Um, I'm co-owner of Seventeen-Eight Productions, doing business as Skull and Crown Trading Company, and, um, I'm here today to request temporary increase of, um, our license premises.
Ms. Khan, the request was, um, was revised to twelve PM, correct?
Correct, yes, initially the request was submitted for ten PM, um, due to the mayor's emergency order, which limited sales up to, uh, ten PM, so, but now since we can do until midnight, we request until midnight.
Okay. Commissioners, questions, comments?
Motion to approve request number two-one dash two-two-nine-one-two.
Second.
It moved in second to approve request number two-one dash two-two-nine-one-two, all those in favor?
Li.
Aye.
Min.
Aye.
Miyashiro.
Aye.
Gana Ban.
So vote aye, motion carried, your request is approved, Ms. Khan, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, calling agenda item number ten, request number two-one dash two-two-nine-three-eight from Uncle's and Horridge LLC.
Um, with respect to agenda item number ten, uh, someone, uh, two individuals did register, however, they have, uh, submitted a, uh, request to withdraw this request, they no longer need, uh, that inventory balancing. Uh, I believe the Commission can take action, uh, on that, the withdrawal.
Thank you, Ms. Yuray.
To withdraw request number two-one dash two-two-nine-three-eight.
Second.
It moved in second to withdraw request number two-one dash two-two-nine-three-eight, all those in favor?
Li.
Aye.
Min.
Aye.
Miyashiro.
Aye.
Gana Ban.
I vote aye, motion carried, withdrawn is approved. Calling agenda number eleven, request number two-one dash two-two-nine-three-three, uh, from Matt Basinger of Swell Spark, hello?
Hello Commissioners, my name is Matt Basinger, on behalf of Swell Spark, doing business as Blade and Timber LLC. We currently operate at nine-seventy Queen Street in Honolulu, we are looking to move into a new space, the former site, The Real Gastro Pub, um, located at five-oh-six Kiabe. Um, we're requesting a waiver of rule three dash eight-two dash three-two dot one A, requiring a temporary license application to be filed within five working days of the surrender of the premises or the closing of a business. Um, our hope would be to move into this space, uh, eventually, while we're under lease right now. Um, but right now, just asking for a waiver of that rule so that we can apply for a temporary license in the existing space.
Okay. Mr. Um, Basinger, is, I'm looking on the camera, is, is the applicant next to you, Jessie Poole, is she part of the application as well?
Yes, ma'am, I apologize, I apologize for not introducing her, Jessie Poole is our Director of Operations for our company. Um, she's not right next to me, but she is, uh, yeah, on a separate video feed.
Thank you, and I will, will note it for the record that she appeared today as well.
Thank you.
Commissioners, questions, comments for the applicant?
And motion to approve request number two-one dash two-two-nine-three-three.
Second.
It's been moved in second to approve request number two-one dash two-two-nine-three-three, all those in favor?
Li.
Aye.
Min.
Aye.
Miyashiro.
Aye.
Gana Ban.
I also vote aye, motion carried, thank you. Request is approved. Okay.
Chair, motion for the adoption of decision in order for agenda items twelve through twenty inclusive.
Second.
It moved in second to approve the adoption of decision in order for agenda items twelve to twenty inclusively, all those in favor?
Li.
Aye.
Min.
Aye.
Miyashiro.
Aye.
Gana Ban.
I vote aye, motion carried. Okay, we are now into the adjudication hearings, um, Ms. Ogata, I'll call agenda item number twenty-one, Club Little Saigon. Go ahead, Ms. Ogata.
Good afternoon, Chair members of the Commission, Deputy Corporation Counsel Paige Ogata.
Good afternoon, Chair members of the Commission, Keith Kyuchi for the licensee, we waive reading of the charge and our plea of no contest.
Motion to accept the no contest, please.
Second.
It moved in second to accept the no contest plea for agenda item number twenty-one, all those in favor?
Li.
Aye.
Min.
Aye.
Miyashiro.
Aye.
Gana Ban.
I also vote aye, motion carried.
Chair members of the Commission, I'm sorry, this is a first violation of this type, it was, um, an after-hours service type violation. Um, the investigators caught or entered the premises and noticed alcohol out for sale thirty-five minutes after closing, so my recommended fine is eight hundred fifty dollars, five hundred dollar base fine plus three hundred fifty dollars additional.
Thank you, Mr. Kyuchi.
Uh, uh, Commissioner Miyashiro, thank you for allowing me to talk to Tulay, who was the manager who was out of the country. I talked to her both, um, today and yesterday. She insists that the, uh, investigators came in at ten after twelve, not twelve-thirty-five, she's adamant about that. Uh, she said that the, there were no serving, uh, glasses in front of customers. The two people there were there to take the, uh, two remaining employees home. She insists that what was bussed was, uh, being bussed from the table, was not out for service, and actually one of the, uh, glasses was retrieved from the sink. So, she was very insistent when she talked to me that the two people there were not drinking, that they, uh, had were just bussing the rest of the tables, I understand what the Commissioners, Commission position is on that. I needed to make that clear, 'cause she was very adamant at both the time and, and what happened with the glasses of the table.
Okay, thank you, um, do you have any understanding whether she was there, present at the time?
She was, she was the person that they issued the citation to, which is why I needed to talk to her. And the investigator's report indicates that they were bussing it from the counter at the time. Uh, I think what the difference was is she said that they were almost all bussed from the counter, um, and then obviously, the other difference is the time.
Okay, Ms. Ogata, um, do you have any comments or any response?
Um, the only comment that I have is that the investigators included a photo of the bar clock in this, um, investigator report, and the bar clock, um, reflects twelve-fifty, um, which would be consistent with a twelve-thirty-five, um, entry time, or at least citation time. Um, and that there are, there's at least one photo, um, with items, including at least one styrofoam cup available on the bar when the investigators did enter, there were, I will agree with Mr. Kyuchi, there were, um, also photos of cups that may or may not have contained alcohol in a sink.
Okay, thank you, uh, motion to approve the recommended fine of eight hundred fifty dollars for agenda item twenty-one.
Second.
It moved in second to accept the recommended fee of, of fine of eight hundred fifty dollars, all those in favor?
Li.
Aye.
Min.
Aye.
Miyashiro.
Aye.
Gana Ban.
I vote aye, motion carried. Okay, uh, fee is imposed of eight hundred fifty dollars, thank you, Mr. Kyuchi. Okay, calling agenda item twenty-two, Sushi King.
Yes, may the record reflect Wayne Luke as attorney for the licensee, we waive reading of the charges, enter plea of no, not, not, on the, no contest uh, for the record. Yeah, the, uh, the licensee was present, but she had to go, she had number one on the agenda today, she had to leave to open the restaurant.
Okay, thank you, let me, um, move to accept the plea, motion to accept the no contest, please.
Second.
It's been moved in second to accept the no contest plea for agenda item twenty-two, all those in favor?
Li.
Aye.
Min.
Aye.
Miyashiro.
Aye.
Gana Ban.
I vote aye, motion carried.
This is a first violation of this type, recommended fine is two hundred fifty dollars.
Mr. Luke, any comment?
No, this is, this was a clerical, um, mistake, and, uh, we'll make sure that it's cleared up.
Okay, thank you, motion to approve the recommended fine of two hundred fifty dollars.
Second.
It's been moved in second to approve the recommended fine of two hundred fifty dollars for agenda item twenty-two, all those in favor?
Li.
Aye.
Min.
Aye.
Miyashiro.
Aye.
Gana Ban.
I vote aye, motion carried. Uh, calling agenda item number twenty-three, Club Waterfall.
Good afternoon again, Madam Chair, members of the Commission, Keith Kyuchi for the licensee. I just was retained on this matter yesterday, I would ask that this matter be, uh, continued to next available date.
I have no objection.
Thank you, motion to continue agenda item twenty-three to the next available hearing.
Second.
It's been moved in second to continue agenda item number twenty-three to next available date, all those in favor?
Li.
Aye.
Min.
Aye.
Miyashiro.
Aye.
Gana Ban.
I vote aye, motion carried. Calling agenda item number twenty-four, Club Waterfall.
Again, good afternoon, Madam Chair, members of the Commission, Keith Kyuchi for the licensee. Again, I was retained yesterday, I would ask that, uh, I, agenda item twenty-four be continued to next available date.
No objection.
Thank you, motion to continue agenda item twenty-four to the next available hearing date.
Second.
It's been moved in second to continue agenda item number twenty-four to the next available date, all those in favor?
Li.
Aye.
Min.
Aye.
Miyashiro.
Aye.
Gana Ban.
I also vote aye, motion carried. Calling agenda item twenty-five, Club Waterfall, Mr. Kyuchi.
Again, good afternoon, Madam Chair, members of the Commission, Keith Kyuchi for the licensee. Ask that this matter be continued to the next available date for the same previous reason.
No objection.
Motion to continue agenda item twenty-five to the next available hearing date.
Second.
It's been moved in second to continue agenda item twenty-five to the next available date, all those in favor?
Li.
Aye.
Min.
Aye.
Miyashiro.
Aye.
Gana Ban.
I also vote aye, motion carried. Calling agenda item number twenty-six, Club Waterfall, Mr. Kyuchi.
Again, good afternoon, Madam Chair, members of the Commission, Keith Kyuchi for the licensee. Ask this be continued to the next available date for the same reason.
No objection.
The motion to continue agenda item twenty-six to the next- The motion to continue agenda item twenty six to the next available hearing date.
Second.
They moved in second to approve, to continue agenda item twenty six to the next available date. All those in favor?
Lee.
Aye.
Min.
Aye.
Miyashiro.
Aye.
Donovan.
I also vote aye. Motion carried. Calling agenda item number twenty seven, The Ginza Nightclub, Misty Lounge.
Again, good afternoon, Madam Chair, members of the Commission, Keith Kyuchi for the licensee. For twenty seven, I would ask that it be continued to the next available date. I'm not sure whether we're going to contest twenty seven, which is different than the other charges. I would ask that that be continued to the next available date.
No objection.
And for the record, Mister Kyuchi, what's the reason for the request?
I have not yet been able to talk to the client, and I just got the investigative reports today.
Okay, thank you. Motion to continue agenda item twenty seven to the next available hearing date.
Second.
They moved in second to continue agenda item twenty seven to the next available date. All those in favor?
Lee.
Aye.
Min.
Aye.
Miyashiro.
Aye.
Donovan.
I also vote aye. Motion carried. Calling agenda item number twenty eight, The Ginza Nightclub, Misty Lounge. Mister Kyuchi.
Again, good afternoon, Madam Chair, members of the Commission, Keith Kyuchi for the licensee. I would ask that agenda item twenty eight be continued. This will be a contested adjudication hearing as I informed Ms. Ogata.
I have no objection to the continuance, and I can work with Mister Kyuchi as well as the liquor commission to schedule the contested case hearing.
Okay, and just to be clear, Mister Kyuchi, you're not entering a plea. You want to continue and then enter a plea at some later date?
Yes, yes.
Okay, thank you. Motion to continue agenda item twenty eight to the next available hearing date.
They moved in second to continue agenda item number twenty eight to the next available date. All those in favor?
Lee.
Aye.
Min.
Aye.
Miyashiro.
Aye.
Donovan.
I also vote aye. Motion carried. Calling agenda item number twenty nine, The Ginza Nightclub, Misty Lounge. Mister Kyuchi.
Again, good afternoon, Madam Chair, members of the Commission. I would ask that for the same reasons, agenda item twenty nine be continued to the next available. I'm not going to enter a plea at this time because as to item two on agenda, the item twenty nine, it's very possible we made plea to that. So I would ask that this just be continued to the next available.
I have no objection, and I can work with Mister Kyuchi about scheduling the contested hearing.
Thank you. Motion to continue agenda item twenty nine to the next available hearing date.
Second.
They moved in second to continue agenda item twenty nine to the next available date. All those in favor?
Lee.
Aye.
Min.
Aye.
Miyashiro.
Aye.
Donovan.
I vote aye. Motion carried. Calling agenda item number thirty, Hibiscus Club.
Chair members of the Commission, I spoke with counsel for Hibiscus Club today. He requested that we continue this hearing until April twenty second to give him time to speak to his client. I have no objection.
Thank you. Motion to continue agenda item thirty to April twenty two, twenty twenty one.
Second.
They moved in second to continue agenda item number thirty to April twenty second. All those in favor?
Lee.
Aye.
Min.
Aye.
Miyashiro.
Aye.
Donovan.
Vote aye. Motion carried. Calling agenda item number thirty one, Hibiscus Club.
Chair members of the Commission, as with the previous item or agenda item, I spoke with licensee's attorney and they request to continue to April twenty second. No objection.
Motion to continue agenda item thirty one to April twenty two, twenty twenty one.
Second.
They moved in second to continue agenda item thirty one to April twenty second. All those in favor?
Lee.
Aye.
Min.
Aye.
Miyashiro.
Aye.
Donovan.
Vote aye. Motion carried. Calling agenda item number thirty two, D's Karaoke.
Good afternoon again, Madam Chair, members of the Commission, Keith Kyuchi for the licensee. My understanding that the investigator Tubula is not available. So we, Ms. Ogata and I have agreed to move this here, and I think to May thirteenth. She and I have already agreed to stipulate all of her exhibits into evidence. I have no exhibits that will be coming into evidence. I do have one witness, and I do intend to prosecute examiner investigator Tubula.
Thank you. That is correct. Mister Kyuchi and I have already discussed the logistics of how this hearing will go. And May thirteenth, I believe, is the next available date that we have for a contested case hearing.
And again, Mister Kyuchi, to clarify, you're not entering a plea at this point?
I, I could, I could waive reading. Let, let me do it that way. That might be cleaner. I, I would waive reading of the charge and deny the charge.
Okay, thank you. And in addition, and one, thank you for working together, counsel, in terms of the order, early exchange of information, stipulations, evidence and so forth. But I need to read it to the record, and maybe I'll do this after the motion. So let me move to set agenda item two for contested case hearing on May thirteen, twenty twenty one.
Second.
They moved in second to accept the plea for agenda item number thirty two and continue to May thirteenth. All those in favor?
Lee.
Aye.
Min.
Aye.
Miyashiro.
Aye.
Donovan.
I vote aye. Motion carried.
And Mister Kyuchi and Ms. Ogata, we're gonna start a relatively new procedure. And I'm gonna read it to the record some of the requirements the commission has, so please bear with me. And for your benefit, Mister Kyuchi, since your client has pled not guilty and wishes to return for a contested hearing, there are few procedures the commission requires you and the prosecutor to follow. First, seven days before the contested hearing, both the prosecution and the licensee must disclose to each other their proposed exhibits. Exhibits that are not timely disclosed may not be considered at the contested hearing. Second, the parties must disclose to each other the names of all witnesses and the proposed testimony of each witness seven days before the contested hearing. Witnesses that are not timely disclosed may not be allowed to testify at the contested hearing. Third, because we are proceeding with remote adjudication hearings, each party's exhibits must be uploaded to the liquor commission's Google Drive by four P M on the Wednesday before the contested hearing. Information on how that can be accomplished will be provided to the parties and will be available on the liquor commission's website shortly. If you have physical evidence that cannot be uploaded to the Google Drive, please be sure to let both the liquor commission and the other party know. As a reminder to each party, personal, personal information such as medical information, social security numbers, birth dates, or bank account numbers must be redacted by the party whose exhibit contains that information. Do either of you have any questions, starting with you, Mister Kyuchi?
No, I don't. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Ogata, any questions?
Nothing. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, calling agenda item number thirty three, D's Karaoke.
Again, good afternoon, Madam Chair, members of the Commission. We would waive reading of the charge, deny the charge. The evidence for item, agenda item thirty three is going to be almost the same as agenda item thirty two. We'd ask that they be scheduled on the same date, which would be May thirteen.
And I will join in that request. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Motion to set agenda item thirty three for contested hearing on May thirteen, twenty twenty one.
Second.
They moved in second to set the contested hearing for agenda item number thirty three on May thirteen. All those in favor?
Lee.
Aye.
Min. Miyashiro.
Aye.
Donovan.
Vote aye. Motion carried. Thank you, Mister Kyuchi and Ms. Ogata.
Thank you.
Oh, okay, sorry.
Before you sign off, Mister Kyuchi and Ms. Ogata, rather than me going through the same spiel I just did for the prior agenda item, I want to incorporate it by reference, but make sure you folks understand that we do require disclosures prior to the hearing. Do you have any questions, or does anybody want me to repeat this spiel?
No, we're fine.
Great.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, calling agenda item number thirty four, Liquor Administrator. Any legislative update?
I have nothing further to add to the legislative update provided in the weekly report. Good news with both one thirty six and one thirty seven. Last stop.
Very good. Okay, calling agenda item number thirty five, any admin administrative matters?
Nothing from me.
Okay, I think we mentioned this in general is that the desire is we are looking to come back into doing in-person meetings, at least for the commissioner's side, on the commissioners if we can. Since we're gonna start wrapping up on adjudications and other business, it would be more desirable for us to be meeting together as a group. So we've instructed the administrator to try to carry that request out to properly, you know, see what we can do. Whether we're, we preferably want to be back at the liquor commission office, and it's to each others, it's each commissioner's comfort level, whether you got your shot, you feel comfortable, or what may be as far as returning. Virtual is also considered attending as well. So we, we respect each and every one of you that chooses to continue to do virtual. However, for some of us, such as myself, with the internet connections and the problems that I've been having technically, I would prefer to at least have one other commissioner or at least be able to group as much as we can so we can get some business done and maintain quarrel. Yeah.
Just let us know, and we will make that accommodation available.
Okay, we're looking, and I don't know if you guys want to put in any type of feedback. Commissioner Miyashiro had a good question or concern. And I think it was, you know, some of us got our COVID. We're not sure as far as what the office position is with the liquor staff there. I don't know if you know, Don, if, if how much of your staff has been vaccinated yet or what? Any comment on safety protocols or anything?
We, 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 all we can say is we, we were allowed, they were offered the vaccination, and if they choose to get vaccinated, that was their right.
So safety say we're, we are considering or looking as early as maybe like, I want to say the second meeting in April, that it gives us time to plan for as well as the other commissioner's schedules. And like I said, still coming in remotely is still an option. But we wanted to leave it an option to be able to in-person meet as well too. Does anybody find any objection, any concerns with that request?
Uh, but.
Well, hold on a second. What?
As, as long as we, we know how, how many people are coming in, because we have to maintain the six feet. I have to talk with my staff to see if we have to put barriers and those kinds of things.
If I could just, I'm, I'm sorry, the, the JAV's upgrade is scheduled for the fifth, April fifteenth. So.
Yeah, we can push it out, I guess.
Yeah. We think actually April twenty second would be a better date just because by that time, the JAV's upgrade will be complete and we'll have the chance to beta test it and work out the, work out the bugs.
So noted, John, commissioner, so we could go as early as April twenty second, no, no earlier. And then we can discuss prior or kind of take a road check as far as who plans on attending in person versus virtual. And that way, Don's staff can make that accommodation at the office to maintain, to make sure we maintain the six-foot distancing as well.
And if, I could comment, Chair.
Yes.
If we rewind the clock to about one year ago at our last in-person meeting, the protocol then, I think, is appropriate and can be recycled and used again today. And personally, I feel more confidence, especially with myself having at least the first vaccine, that I'd be much more comfortable in April twenty twenty one than I was in April of twenty twenty. So thank you.
Absolutely. I feel the, the same way. And like I said, this disconnect that we have, especially with what happened with the weather and the internet issues that we had last week. We try to make the meetings productive as possible, and we know, I, I, I guess we all acknowledge that we were, we're gonna have to play catch-up on an aggressive schedule. So before it starts catching up to us, you know, if we can get things done and that, and get business done, then that would be better, best for all of us.
I agree. I had my shots.
So we won't be here till eight o'clock at night, right? Okay, any other questions, concerns, anything else? Okay.
Have a, have a good weekend. Tomorrow's a holiday for some of us.
For some of you guys, okay. Have a great weekend, guys. Meeting officially adjourned. Thank you very much.